Fastbridge screening data, which Jen just talked about. I go to all the data meetings with all of these grade levels so that we can talk with the teachers, analyze the data, figure out who we believe needs more help, who are not already getting services. And from there, the students that we flagged, I take and I administer the Gates McGinnity reading test to gather more information about their reading. They qualify for Title I if they score below the 40 NCE, which is the normal curve equivalent. We also consider their reading level, I can administer the DRA for them so that I can really pinpoint what their reading level is, and if they're six months below grade level or more, that definitely qualifies them. And of course, I'm in constant communication with the teachers, with the families, it's really a team effort. Sorry, I knew my cat was gonna jump on here. I'm in constant communication with the teachers and the families to make sure that, you know, throughout the year, we're checking in, and if anybody is falling behind in any of these ways that I can administer the gates to them, make sure everybody's getting what they need. And we're always, you know, communicating and ready to help anybody that we can. So yeah, we have just the kind of a brief overview of some of the big data points from the past year. This is the first grade data. This shows the data of the early reading growth that just assesses their understanding of concepts of print, their phonological awareness, and their decoding skills. Our grade two data, this was two assessments are showing here. The CBMR is a big one. That basically assesses their fluency and their accuracy in their reading. And then the A-reading, which assesses their phonics and comprehension skills. And then below I have the DRA levels, which students made a full year's worth of growth. Our grade three data, we had 10 students in this group. I have the CBMR again, and the A-reading, which in these higher grades assesses their vocabulary and their comprehension skills. And then 40% of these students made a year's worth of growth on their DRA levels. Fourth grade, we had two students in this, 100%, both of them made a year's worth of growth on their DRA levels. And I have the CBMR and A-reading data once again. Fifth grade, we had six students in this group. Same assessments are up here for the upper grades, 50% of them made a year's worth of growth. And then sixth grade, we had our four students. 25% of them made a year's worth of growth, and then also the CBMR and the A-reading data. So for the next steps that we have with this, it was a big learning year for me. I'm very, very lucky that the district has sent me to be trained in Orton-Gillingham, which has just been a wealth of knowledge. And I'm now fully implementing it into all my first grade through fourth grade groups this year. We have our new program, Wonders, that I'm implementing with the fifth and sixth grade that is already off to an awesome start, working really, really closely with the teachers. We're gonna continue the weekly progress monitoring with the FastBridge, and then we still do our screenings three times a year. I also attended a training for the Science of Reading with the Hill for Literacy, which I am also implementing those strategies this year. So I'm really looking forward to a very successful year with these very hardworking kids and getting to identify even more kids that I can help. And I think that we're off to a good start so far.
I think we are, and to also add on to next steps, we of course want to incorporate more parent communication and family engagement. So that's a big thing that Ms. Fernandez and I are gonna be working on with our first touching base with families on September 29th during our open house. Mrs. Fernandez will be available to speak with some families. And then going forward, we had wonderful literacy nights that kind of took a backseat due to COVID. So we definitely, we tried Zoom, and we've done a whole host of other things, but it'll be really wonderful to be able to get another literacy night to just encourage families to come and talk to us and offer materials and information for students so that, you know, reading is a team effort, it's not just one person in one place. It really is making sure that we're all working together in the best interest of the students. So I would really love to say thank you to Mrs. Fernandez, who's been a wonderful, wonderful addition to our school community. And although she started last year, it feels like she's been here for a really long time. And I know the students really benefit from her warmth and her knowledge and the fact that she wanted to go and be able to be trained in a systematic reading intervention that shows wonderful, wonderful growth for students. It's not easy to get trained in Orton-Gillingham. I know I've been trained myself as a special education teacher. It requires a lot of work. And so to be able to have that skill set available in the building for our Title I students is just gonna be a wonderful addition. And that's all we really have from last year. If anybody has any questions, we'd love to answer them together.
Thank you, Ms. Dowd and Ms. Fernandez, appreciate the presentation. Let's open it up to questions and comments from the school committee.
Hey, this is Paul, thanks for the information. Just a general question, what are your key lessons? What's been the pinch points? What is the hardest thing to overcome? And what are the best things you've learned?
Hi Paul, nice to meet you. I definitely, I mean, the Orton-Gillingham training has opened me up to just how important it is to have that systematic practice that you're providing to your students. I've definitely learned a lot, you know, relying on my assessments to inform all of my instruction. I think that with all of that put together, it's gonna be a successful year for the students. And we started full-fledged today was the first day with the groups going gung-ho on Orton-Gillingham, and they're loving it already, which is great. And I think that it also instills that love for reading in them, that, you know, they're excited that they're feeling successful, and I'm excited to keep doing that all year.
I don't have any questions, but I would just like to say that this role is so vital in the schools, and your role is so important. And it takes children who are so frustrated and don't like reading, and a lot of them come out loving reading. And so it's just a fantastic thing to see. I love seeing the data from this, and embarrassingly so. I'm glad to be able to put a name to your face because I see you, or I used to see you at pickup all the time, and you were always a nice smiling face for all the parents, and you waved to everybody, and so sweet. So, you know, I'm glad to be able to put that name to the face for you, and congratulations.
Thank you, and it's nice to see you again too.
Christine.
Hi, Christine Popczynski, and my son actually benefited from Title I years ago. So I'm a huge proponent. I'm just wondering, did the numbers really jump up after COVID in terms of the amount of students who needed services?
We did have a lot join the groups after COVID. I wasn't at the school before, but I can say that our first grade groups were big last year, very big. And we have a great team that we worked really, really hard to get a lot of kids, you know, the amount of services that we need this year. It's feeling like a more manageable number because a lot I think that there definitely was a lot of kids that joined Title. But it was a great opportunity to be able to help them go to exactly where they needed to be and give them exactly what they needed.
Oh, that's great.
I'd just like to thank both of you, excellent job, thank you so much. Thank you for all of the hard work that you do. And for the school committee, you typically do get an update on Title I and the outcomes for Title I. And the theme that you'll be hearing tonight, even also when you hear from Michelle, and just a tiny bit on Title III, is that if we're doing our job well, the school committee, all of us should be able to point to the systems and processes that we have in place in order to very quickly identify children who will benefit from supplemental evidence-based instruction. And we should be able to say to you, this is the system we have for identifying those children. This is how we know who needs extra help. This is a regular way that we do it. So we have an assessment schedule, like Jen and Brooke pointed out, three times a year. So we try to catch kids quickly, and then we make sure that they're getting evidence-based systematic strategies like Brooke talked about, so it isn't just arbitrary or what we're in the mood for, but things that are proven to work. And then we closely monitor those students to see if the intervention is having its intended effect. And we do this in Title I and in other ways. If we're not doing this, we're not fulfilling our professional obligations. I would argue we're not filling our moral obligations to students. So, and as simple as it sounds, it isn't present in every district that you will go to. So we do have a very robust system of doing this. We're constantly trying to enhance and expand it, and Title I is a critical part of that. So that's why this presentation happens for you every year. Thank you very much, Brooke and Jen.
Thank you, Annie.
Thank you. I do have one more quick question. In terms of the kids who have not progressed out or have not made enough advancement at the end of sixth grade, is there anything we can do for them in the middle school? Is there any type of program?
Yeah, so what we're doing, Hopkins is not at the same place, which you've heard before, not yet, at the same place of screening, although this year we're expanding screenings. So that's saying they'll be using the Measured Academic Progress MAP testing. They have their screening windows for fall and for winter. They'll identify students and then make determinations about where and how those students get supplemental support if their MAP scores indicate that they are at risk for not meeting grade level benchmarks. And that could happen in, there's an academic support class, I know you're familiar with this, Chris, but for the viewing public, if they're not, there's an academic support class. There have been reading support classes in the past. And sometimes it's just how the teachers within their own classroom might then work with students in smaller groups who have similar profiles and needs. But our goal is, we have a district goal that will have screening and interventions that are robust and consistent in grades K through eight in math, literacy, and mental health. We're actually moving those out to K through 12. So that is our district goal, and we have made progress, and we're continuing to make progress. These tiered systems of support have been in place longer than had the elementary. And Title I is only, as you point out, it is limited, it's a federal program, it's limited to the elementary school. But we are screening at Hopkins this year and determining what supplemental intervention students will need and how and when they get those.
Like I said, especially with the learning gap due to COVID, we've got some kids that may not have gotten everything they needed and got moved on. And so now they're in a place where Title I doesn't apply. And as an English teacher, you know, my reading fluency just makes everything go better. Every subject becomes easier once we get them up to speed with their reading fluency. So I'm a huge proponent of any type of reading program.
Excellent.
Thanks.
And again, thank you, Annie, Brooke, and Jen, I'm a big fan as well. My kid went through Title I reading programs, started with a lot of tears, and now he no longer cries. So thank you so much for all of your efforts. We're gonna move next to the wellness policy and Jen.
Actually, I messed this up. The Wellness Policy, the Policy Subcommittee will discuss, so we're good there. Jen doesn't even need to do that, we can go right to the field trip. So these guys can go, sorry, that was my final adjustment. Policies, you can do that, and the field trip.
Wonderful, yes, Ruth Ann, tell us about Guatemala.
Thank you so much. I know you've got a tight schedule, and I really would be happy to give a more thorough presentation at a different date when there's more time. But some of you who probably don't even know, but I was pre-COVID, we were approved for a trip to Honduras, and then it kept getting pushed and pushed, et cetera. So we're scheduled to go now for April of this year, or next year, 2023. And there were a couple of families who told me they were a little concerned about Honduras these days. And as a result, I scheduled a meeting with the president of Squads Abroad, the man who owns the company that we go with. And he said, there are families all over the place that are concerned about Honduras right now, even though he still maintains that it is a very safe trip and that is their first priority. So, but he did say, a lot of schools are changing to Guatemala. And he said, he thinks that that might be a really smart change this year, given the conditions, et cetera, and the level of safety. And he thinks that families and even the school committee would feel a little bit better about that trip. It's still a service trip. This actually, I think, even sounds a little more exciting because it looks like we're gonna be working directly in a school. We may be doing some building projects, but also helping some small construction projects, but just helping with some of the educational programs in the school. So I'm just actually hoping for approval to make a safer change and go to Guatemala instead of Honduras.
Great, thank you, Ruth Ann. Looks like a great trip, and I'm really glad you're keeping students' and families' safety at the front of your mind, opening it up to questions or comments from the school committee.
Hey Ruth Ann, it's Paul, I'm a big supporter of these trips, but just looking at the State Department website, right? I know no place is perfect, but there's still, Guatemala has security risks just as much as Honduras. Are different, I mean, how do you assess the difference between security risks and those?
Yes, I think it's at the same level, but it's funny because when I was approved, we were at this level as well. Annie and I had been on, I think what helped us to get approved was Annie and I went on this trip together to kind of walk through exactly what the students would walk through. And we felt extremely safe. I mean, Squads Abroad, that's what they, they're certainly focused on, everybody's safety as well. In terms of, and like you said, it is the same level. For whatever reason, Eric Werner, again, he's the president, he said he thinks people are feeling better about it. I actually, he didn't actually say, this is why, he said, the families are making this change to Guatemala.
And one thing I would add to that too, Ruth Ann. So on its face, you're correct, they're both at what's called Level Three at the State Department. If you read the State Department advisories, actually, they list more areas in Guatemala that they recommend that people don't travel to. Squads Abroad will never take students or staff to any of the areas that are listed as do-not-travel places. Just a reminder, when Ruth Ann and I went on this trip, there was a police escort from the airport to the place where we were staying. Anytime that there was long travel, there was a police escort, and a medical doctor travels with the students the entire time that they're there. I do, I imagine that there is some subjectivity, if people's just general feeling of what that might be. But also realistically, airfare, it might turn out that trip is a bit cheaper. Honduras, there aren't as many flights going into Honduras as there are to Guatemala. That doesn't have to do with safety per se, that added bonus is it's likely that will be less expensive because the flights will be less expensive. But again, we'll, you know, fully, full disclosure, these are, which is why they have so many additional measures. When kids go on EF trips, they don't have police escorts, they don't have medical doctors traveling with them. It is a service trip. And so to do meaningful service sometimes requires that we go to very, very impoverished countries that, and also consequently, that are slightly, have greater political instability. This organization is an excellent organization, it's why Ruth Ann and I walked through the entire trip. But I think they're, we're deferring to Eric's judgment, but there's nothing specific. Like they do have the exact same level of risk associated with them on the State Department website. If the entire country were ever a Level Four, we would not be traveling there. But there are regions within every country, same with Mexico. If you travel to Mexico, there are Level Four regions in Mexico. We would never be or take kids to a region that was designated as Level Four.
Okay, thanks, good answer, appreciate it.
Any other thoughts or comments from the school committee?
Do you have enough chatroom?
I still have to figure out how many students I have yet, but I think, yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah. We've done so well together before.
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you, everyone.
This does require, though, we would like a vote to approve the location of Guatemala, and then Ruth Ann can begin kind of fundraising. And I think parents would like to know that school committee has approved this location.
Can I hear a motion to approve the field trip to Guatemala?
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to the MTSS SEL presentation. Michelle, it's welcome.
Hi, thank you, thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll share my screen. I'm appreciative to all of you for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm excited to share with you some of what we accomplished last year and our plans for this year as well. And so I believe you received the slides or have access to those as well. And throughout them, there are a number of links where, if you're interested at any point, you can see, there's a lot more information. Sorry, I'm just trying to advance, oh, here we go, okay. Sorry, it didn't work for me initially. Okay, at the social-emotional learning and multi-tiered support system, systems of support, excuse me, coach, there are three main areas that I'm involved with. The first is curriculum implementation, and I include other research-based practices there because they're not necessarily always curriculum. Assessment is a big piece of what I do, and teacher support. Teacher support happens through both classroom coaching and professional development sessions. So I'll briefly discuss each of these areas, and then later touch on how they all work together because they do just that. What happens in one determines and drives the decisions and actions in another of the areas. For curriculum implementation, there were three big areas last year. The first is a K through eight social-emotional learning curriculum called Fly Five. As part of a grant we received last year, we had a spring pilot where a number of our teachers, so we were pretty excited actually, more, even more than we had plotted for. Our kindergarten classroom, a first grade classroom, both second grade, both third grade, both fourth grade, and all of our seventh grade students received between 12 and 16 weeks in a social-emotional curriculum. Fly Five is created by the Center for Responsive Schools, and it features responsive classroom approaches in its lessons. There's also a DEIB component in it. Following that pilot, we surveyed teachers to help us determine if we should move forward with implementing this curriculum as our social-emotional learning curriculum, or if we should look into others, and it was a unanimous decision. They felt good about the program, everyone who participated in it, they wanted to give it a full year's try, and really saw a lot of potential in that. So this year, I'm happy to report, all K through eight students will receive this curriculum as part of their studies. The second is not a curriculum, it is an evidence-based approach to teaching and discipline, and that's called responsive classroom. I've shared with you a little bit about that in the past with some of our discussions, but it focuses on four main areas, engaging academics, positive community, effective management, and developmental awareness, and how these all work together to make the greatest, most positive impacts on our students. I'll talk a little bit about, more about responsive classroom too later when I get into teacher supports. The third area with curriculum, again, is not a curriculum, but rather a research-based approach and framework, and that's positive behavior supports. And this is a framework for promoting and teaching, reinforcing positive behaviors. At ATS, we had, oh, sorry, at ATS, we had PBIS in place for a number of years prior to COVID. Last year, we took a look at what had been going well, what we could pick back up as a result of COVID. We weren't able to implement all that we had done prior to COVID because of distancing restrictions and cohorting and all of that. So last year was really about rebuilding and putting back into place initiatives that had gone well prior to COVID, and making sure we were implementing those with fidelity and getting new staff trained. Similarly, at Hopkins, they had just touched into PBIS prior to COVID. We're ready to launch a framework, but we needed to relook at that and how COVID impacted that. So we did more piloting in some of the middle school classrooms in the springtime with a whole class and a grade level incentive program, or support, I should say. And we will get more into PBIS this year at Hopkins. The second area that's pretty large I'm involved with is assessment. You heard during the Title I conversation about universal screenings. Prior to COVID, we had universal screenings for literacy in place for all K through 12 students. When it came to math, though, we had that just for third grade and beyond, and we didn't yet have any for mental health screenings. Last year, we got back into our practice of using universal screenings and literacy for all of our K through 12 students. And, excuse me, FastBridge for K through six, MAP for seven through 12. So universal screening literacy, but it's two different types of tests, sorry, depending on the age of the student. For math, similarly, they were two different, we had never before had a screener for K to two students. They participated in that FastBridge for the first time last year, and we re-implemented a three times a year universal screening in math for our grade three through 12 students. For mental health, we started again as part of a grant. We piloted in the spring, Sabers, which is a universal screening for all K through 12 students. It's a teacher rating scale, and for students to rate themselves. And they're able to do that in grades five through 12. The pilot went really, really well. We have plans to implement this universal screener three times this year, fall, winter, and spring, and we'll be determining supports for students who need it based on the information we're getting from these screenings. For teacher support, the two big areas under that are professional development. There is a series of responsive classroom, professional development trainings that I provided to staff at ATS last year. Those went really well. I put together something for our new teachers. New teacher orientation takes place the day before all of the other faculty and staff return at the start of the school year. So I was able to do some work on that day with our new faculty. And one of the first teacher days back, I also launched, helped launch PBIS at Hopkins. Okay, similar to the series I did last year with responsive classroom at the elementary school, I have plans to do six additional sessions at Hopkins Academy this year. When it comes to individual teacher support, that could involve classroom coaching. Sometimes that is initiated by the teacher themselves, sometimes that comes out of a conversation with administration. There are a number of different teachers who reached out to me last year. I really enjoyed getting into the classroom and helping them. There were also three who sought help on their educator evaluation and goal setting and execution, chose to include either behavior goals or social-emotional learning goals as part of their teacher evaluation. So when you talk about support, what we're aiming for is that at all times, in all areas, whether it's academic, social, emotional, or behavior, that 80% of our students or more are meeting the expectations. So when you think at a basic academic, as a basic academic example, grades two student, they hope to be reading 105 words per minute by the end of second grade. Similarly, we have behavior expectations. We expect that students at lunch are going to keep their hands to themselves, they're going to use an appropriate They're going to use an appropriate volume in their voice, use appropriate language, et cetera. So again, when we have systems that work well, 80% or more of our students are meeting expectations. Using that same slide and showing how our supports fall into place, you'll see in the green. So this would be supports that all students get. We call those tier one supports or our foundation. Universal screenings in all areas are happening. We have curriculum that's happening, that's Fly Five. And we also have other research-based practices, responsive classroom and positive behavior supports. When students need additional support, we have things like Math Accelerator for math. We have a variety of different literacy programs. That really depends on the age level and the reading level of the students. We have social groups when it comes to emotional or behavior supports, and we also would include some individual behavior supports and incentives in here. For a very small percentage of students who fall into what we would call the red area, that's really individualized programming. On the next couple of slides, I have examples of what happens when we don't meet that mark as a large system. I believe it was Christine who asked earlier, I believe you asked Brooke, if we saw differences in last year, post-COVID, as we did in our pre-COVID years. We certainly saw that with math. The top, what you're looking at here, let me back up. So here is an example of the kind of work that's done when we're not meeting that 80% goal. The top is our ATS, the grades three through six results from the fall math, MAP testing. So this is the universal screener for math. Now, prior to COVID, we had a part-time math coach that met our needs. That was sufficient enough. We had 80, we were doing well on MCAS. 80% of our students were meeting grade level expectations. Last year, after our MAP, MAP fall assessment, you can see this was not happening. We worked together, Annie and I and the other, other members of the administration, determined that our need had gone beyond that of a part-time math tutor. So we created a position, created a schedule, researched programming, got faculty trained, hired an interventionist. And by the end of January, we were able to set students up in Math Accelerator, which you might recall from a couple of slides ago as one of our tier two interventions. Once we had that intervention, so this was really just a half year. If you take a look at the red and orange, you'll see across the board that those colors really shrunk. These colors, MAP codes them. They are achievement percentiles nationally. But what I would draw your attention to is the red and orange. For our purposes, we're looking at those students who fall in one of those colors. Those would be considered at risk for not passing grade level MCAS standards. So again, when we had a whole system, a larger whole school support needed, we responded to the data by creating a position, by researching different programs and implementing a curriculum that, as you can see, proved effective for our grade three through six students in math. Similarly, when a single child is not meet, when there is a gap between what's occurring and how they're performing in the classroom and what is expected of them, whether it's academically, socially, emotionally, or behaviorally, they are referred to the tiered support team. Prior to COVID, we had something called the Child Study Process. We spent a good chunk of the fall last year really working to update and revamp this to reflect what's now required of districts for tiered. And the name is just really more appropriate. Child Study is a little bit outdated and more of like a track toward, or implies a track towards special ed. And we really want to stay away from that. When a tiered support team, when a student is referred to the tiered support team, there's a variety of faculty members, staff members at a meeting. There could be classroom teachers, sometimes special education teachers. Brooke is often at a number of the meetings. There could be adjustment counselor, school psychologist. But it's really a problem-solving meeting. And the team problem solves in the order of instruction, curriculum, environment, and then the learner. At each of those meetings, an action plan is created. Different members are responsible for different pieces of those action plans. And then we meet in a cycle of six to eight weeks. The big highlights from last year is that there were 16 students referred to a tiered support team. Of those 16, 13 demonstrated accelerated growth, helped close gaps, whether those were academic, social, emotional, or behavior, and did not need a referral for psychoeducational testing. We had a decrease in undesired behavior in middle school, as reported by the middle school team. There were a number of meetings I met with them in the spring. There were also, sorry, I regularly surveyed teachers after professional development sessions. So following the start of this school year at Hopkins, the get back to school, the implementing positive behavior supports, starting PD that I did with them, 94% of those participants responded that they learned skills that can be immediately applied to their classroom or other school environment. And you heard me mention a couple of times about grant work that we had done last year. That I did some work with Annie on that and helped secure a good amount of funding for our district and that there's a continuation on that this year. So we're excited. We just got started last year and excited to continue. And that's all that I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And like I said, it's loaded with links too. So at any time, if you're curious to learn more or have follow-up questions, if at other times you're searching through anything I've linked in there, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, Michelle. First of all, thank you for all of your work across the board. I'm just really pleased to see that our intention is manifested. I also want to commend you on bringing in grand dollars to help us continue this work. That's really great. And I do have a question about strategies that educators are implementing, and it sounds like they're eager and excited to take those on. I wonder, and you don't have to have an answer for this right away, but I wonder if there are highlights, people that you can sort of lift up for new practices they've implemented as a result of the effort and the training. And that might anecdotally help spread the uptake on educators being even more interested in some of the strategies and trainings.
So coming off of last year, we had a couple interested in going to the Responsive Classroom Institute as a result of the trainings and a desire to learn more. I believe Karen Souzy at the middle school, what her schedule allowed for her to participate in additional training this summer. I know Shereen St. Peters was interested, but her schedule unfortunately didn't allow for it. What comes to mind this year quickly again is the middle school team. We had our first grade level meeting last Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday, I think it was Thursday. And they were really pleased at how the start of this year has gone in comparison to last year. You know, last year notably feeling like students weren't quite ready. You heard Brooke talk about how in first grade, we saw that with reading last year. Similarly, the middle school experienced that with behavior, with emotions, with with social, anything social really, and sort of academic behaviors. We think like learning behaviors, organizational tools, things like that in place. And they all had really positive feedback to say, what I stressed about, or what I tried to stress to them in that first day training was taking a step back from that content that they're so knowledgeable about, that they're so passionate about, and just taking a step. Sometimes you gotta go slow to go fast and really drilling in the importance of establishing routines and expectations, and how when our beginning of the year nerves and jitters are hitting us hard, that sometimes we don't learn as much as we might. So that was a real highlight for me too. Did that answer your question? Those are the couple of people who, really the whole team there again at the middle school, and a couple who were eager to advance their responsive classroom knowledge that was exciting to see.
That's great. And I'll just, you know, add as a note, Annie, just to keep in the back of our mind how we might lift up and highlight those case stories of transformation in teaching and learning that get different outcomes as a means to both educate the broader parent community, but also as a real way to highlight those who are doing, who are really leaning in to some new tools and practices and serving sort of as a draw for others to think about it as well. Thank you, Michelle, for this great work. Christine?
So I've always been a huge fan of responsive classrooms. We've been doing it in the middle school for a really long time, and you're right, it is, it works. A lot of people don't understand that it, you know, because it's proactive and it's trying to stop behaviors before they become an issue instead of reacting. And I think that, I know in terms of anything I've been, you know, anyone who's asked me questions, I think that your slide presentation was perfect. I think, I hope that's on actually accessible for parents to see so that any questions they might have, they can see what it's about. Because I think it's sort of a misnomer to say that it's just social, emotional, where people don't understand that that encompasses behavior, discipline, literacy, and, you know, testing in terms of where they are in the learning process. Because usually, we find that behavior is connected to whether or not they're feeling successful in a classroom. So if they're not up to speed and they're not understanding what's being said or read, then that is going to affect behavior. That definitely affects social and emotional learning. And that it is all tied together, that the buzzwords, I think, just get people a little, oh, you know, is this about, you know, I don't know, safe space and hug therapy? Because all they hear is social, emotional. They don't realize that that is all part of education and all part of ensuring that they're open to learning the academic part of it. And that it has a lot to do with helping them learn appropriate behaviors so that they can be in a classroom and actually learn the material. So I think that just, you know, I think what we're doing is great. And I think that there's a lot of schools that, you know, don't have what we have. And this is phenomenal. But yeah, I just think there was, you know, that what you're doing is so much more than just social, you know, social emotional learning. So I think that it's great. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Christine. I really appreciate your support and agree with everything you said. So thank you again.
Thank you, Christine. Also, when a student is feeling confident and capable and listening and learning, and it just really affects the tenure of the whole classroom experience. Right? They're not, no one's operating in a vacuum. It really just affects the whole classroom. And so it's very much needed, and you're absolutely right. We are a little bit on the cutting edge of doing the right things. So pretty great. Other school committee members, comments, questions?
I wanted to tack on. I think it's a great idea what Christine said, you know. I did, to back up to, I was really excited when this role came to us. And then I was even more excited that Michelle was going to be placed in that role. I think she's a fantastic teacher and a very enthusiastic person and just a great fit for the role. The only thing I'm sad about is she's not, she's not teaching our students anymore. It's the only downfall I can see. But I really, I really like Christine's idea of making sure these slides are available, but even, you know, take it a step further with Annie, your superintendent letter, and kind of doing like a highlight, like you started me thinking, Christine, you know, do parents really understand what this means? Do they understand, kind of, a lot of parents know Michelle. Do they really understand what she's transitioned into? And I think you sent out an email last year, Michelle. But, you know, I think it's good as a refresher too, to give like a little blurb about Michelle, maybe even with a picture, with a brief like description of of what it means to be in your role and then attaching the slides, like just a little blurb about what it is you do. I just think it would be a great thing to do. I kind of like that idea too of kind of highlighting some of our staff anyways. Just so you can, and I like the idea of pictures too. For instance, I had no idea that that was Brooke in that role. And I would see her every day, and every day I wanted to say, where do you work? But I didn't want to be rude, like out my window waving to her. So, you know, there's just a lot of people in the building that do these fabulous, really important things that a lot of parents that don't have any personal experience with them might not, might not know, right? What their role is and how vital it is. So I kind of like the idea of just like a staff highlight in the superintendent ladder and maybe start with Michelle's at the forefront. You know, what we have to offer, what we can, you know, what these people are, what these people are doing and how it's beneficial.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Paul? Okay, very good. Thank you, Michelle. Really appreciate the update. Glad we're continuing on with the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay. Annie, I believe you're up next.
Yes, I'm not going to share my slides. They're linked into the agenda. I just want to touch base. So this theme again is how do we, how do we make sure that we identify students who may need or require supplemental evidence-based interventions and instructions in order to meet grade level expectations? Title III refers to our English as a second language program for what we do for English language learners. And the way we find English language learners in our district is the same way that every district does in the Commonwealth. Anytime a student enrolls, any student enrolls in our district, excuse me, they need to complete a home language survey. If on that survey, the families indicate that a language other than English is spoken in the home, those children are automatically screened. And if they score in a certain range, they're then offered English as a second language with our certified ESL teachers. Families always have the option of opting out of ESL instruction. They are not required to participate. It's rare that families do, but occasionally they do opt out of ESL instruction. And then once a student, these students are assessed every year in addition to taking MCAS, not in their first year in the country, but in years two and going forward. In addition to taking MCAS, they also take another standardized test that solely focuses on their language proficiency. It assesses their language proficiency, their expressive language, speaking and writing, and their receptive language, reading and listening. And they also get an overall score and an overall literacy score. Once students meet certain thresholds, it happens to be a 4.2, the highest score is a six, 4.2 overall, and a composite literacy of 3.9 on this test, they can then exit out. Before they exit out of ESL, our staff members come together, led by the ESL teacher. They come together as a team. Sometimes we'll recommend continuing services for students. That's happened. If we notice that with all the other screenings we've talked to you about tonight, that if we notice that students, that progress on the access score doesn't seem to be indicative of their overall academic performance, we think long and hard before we take away any support from a student. What's interesting is that overall, we had a peak in our, in our English language learner population. I want to say about, let's say about six or five years ago. If I've been here nine years, say roughly about five years ago, well, we had almost 30. five years ago but we had almost thirty English language learners in the district now that number is down to fourteen not exactly sure what we would attribute that to that we have fewer um recently arriving immigrants and speakers of other languages um perhaps living in Hadley or living long term in Hadley we do have students come through the system and we have had families that then move out of Hadley um but it is curious that it has dipped dramatically right now as of today we have fourteen students who qualify for English ESL instruction we're still screening kindergarten students right now but currently we have fourteen in grades one through twelve seven at HES and seven at HA and again we have several kindergarten students that we're screening um so in the spring of twenty twenty-two it's actually late winter we tested sixteen students um fifteen of those students were included the state sets a progress target for students so the student who wasn't included means they didn't have a progress target because they probably were a new arrival so they didn't have any they hadn't tested before forty percent of students met the progress targets so progress target is what the state says they say we think that you should if you scored one point six over on access we think next year you should score a two point four that's a progress target now more students had moderate to very high growth we saw a couple students whose growth percentages on access were ninety percent seventy-eight SGP so very high very aggressive growth the historical data on students meeting progress targets so this is that question of have we seen anything different with COVID and I would say yes because historically it hovers around fifty percent so in twenty twenty-one fifty-three percent of students met those targets in um uh and and this year we saw this dip in twenty twenty-two to forty now it would seem like well wait a minute that doesn't totally make sense right wouldn't we have seen that dip more in twenty-one than we would in twenty-two and I I can't tell you why but um that twenty-one twenty-two school year was it was hard across the board I mean we saw dips and you'll see also I I probably took it off the agenda hopefully I did we're not going to talk about it because the MCAS scores are still embargoed it's probably an adjustment I'm referring to now I did take it off oh no maybe I didn't um they're still embargoed so we'll talk about them in October but you know spoiler alert um there statewide we saw dips in MCAS we as as Brooke talked about we saw a greater need right after COVID um with students in reading we saw some definite social and emotional needs last year significant and then we saw this dip in access um we do have students lined up and they're being screened now and we'll make sure they get the supports that they need I just wanted to bring you up to speed on the data again what's important for the school committee and the public to know is that this isn't just we look at the data and then we file it away um we look at this routinely so at every screening when all that screening data comes out we'll look back at access we'll look at any what's called early warning indicator system data that the state has and we say okay is there anybody who's identified as being at risk of not meeting grade level benchmarks is there any student for whom that's been who's been identified that we don't have supplemental supports set up for that student so we make sure as grade level teams as a district leadership team we go down that list of every single student and we can name this the interventions that they're receiving the supplemental supports and how the effect is being tracked so hopefully next year we'll see greater growth and that's your title one update.
Great thank you Annie um questions from the school committee Christine.
So um I I'm just wondering if you could address this because I'm wondering if people listening to this are going to say okay so if they're doing all this screening when are they going to actually do schoolwork um and just address whether you know how much time it really does take up um just because I think anyone listening to it might be thinking yeah okay but what is this all going to do for all the kids?
Yeah. That's a great question. Thank you for asking that question uh Christine because I forget we get so entrenched in this we think the whole world is doing it so one of the reasons that we we in literacy that we moved away from DIBELS Hall's favorite acronym always too fast is that acronym is it is really fast so it actually it's quite quick it's it's uh computerized the teachers are well trained and we also bring in so for this year we bring in graduate students in the school psychology program at UMass and they come in and they assist with the screening so we get it done very efficiently the results which makes it so much better than MCAS and some of these larger standardized measures the results are there immediately and then we bring the teachers together and they can immediately identify it's color coded what the benchmarks were who didn't meet them and they can set up those supplemental instructional groups in no time at all and in one just a you know a short period of time they have their groups they have their interventions and the students then see the intervention specialist the actual screening itself and we're talking about things like FAST and MAP they're very short windows and they're very um efficient and really what it's about is getting us the data that we need as quickly as possible um so that we can do as you're referring to the real work of making sure that instruction is matched to the students need and that's on both ends of the continuum right so when we see kids who are doing very well that screening says that these are students who are just performing at very high levels we want to make sure that they're being stretched right we just don't want to hope for the best teach to the middle and hope people don't get frustrated and bored so it is I mean I didn't give you an exact amount of time so I probably misquote it but it is called FAST for a reason and even the MAP testing very efficient at this now and using the data so it doesn't it takes less time than MCAS takes MCAS is much more of an event.
Right.
But thank you for asking that.
Great thank you Christine. Any other thoughts or comments about this?
Hey Annie you all sufficiently staffed to meet this increased need?
Well I I believe that we are because um so we have more needs but you saw like the the English language learner population is on the decline right now so um we have fewer students in that population who we're trying to meet we have specifically used some of our funding like ESSER funding for Michelle's role that hopes helps greatly in terms of meeting the helping us do the mental health screening helping teachers come up with interventions around behavior proactive interventions around behavior and um we are looking to we we had a little bit of some staffing hiccups at the start of the year I believe everybody is aware that we had a late summer resignation and we had to kind of shuffle staff a little bit you have a qualified and certified teacher in every single room it looks like you know we're still looking for a a long-term permanent solution um and it looks like we may be close to landing on one so once that happens um HES will be in a better position to get its um supplemental programs going in in literacy so right now we're a little stressed but there's less to do with that has more to do with trying to respond to this late summer resignation in a critical subject area.
Thanks.
Dean.
I just want to this is more of a curiosity um only because I was reading something and it made me think of this um with our ELL students and everything that goes along you know goes on goes along with the COVID issue of a lot they're seeing that there's a lot of backslide uh due to the fact that they're in the home they may not be speaking that they weren't speaking English at all during that time except possibly to their friends um so they weren't getting instruction uh as much is there is there any way that we can that we go back and you know check to see if some of these ELL students are still progressing if they're no longer getting services does that make?
It does so two things one thank you for bringing that up so I think that bit of like huh wouldn't we have seen more of decline like why do we still see this in twenty-two to your point that even though students may have been coming to school there was still a lot less socializing that was happening which is really critical when you're talking about second language acquisition right that's where a lot of that happens your other question though thank you for asking that so by law we have to monitor for three years so we do they're called Ls and Fls so former English language learners so we monitor and they're on monitoring plans for three years and we're required to do that um and if we see anything that's concerning we can re-refer back to ESL so we do and then we do have to track by law ever L so if you ever receive services but we do closely monitor for a minimum of three years.
Great.
Great. Any other questions for Annie? Thank you Annie.
Nice.
Appreciate your work on this. Okay um we have some uh we're we're done with the agenda items I believe we do have some policies to discuss we'll get to that in a minute we are skipping over the business manager report nothing to refer to this month we'll come back to that next month so school committee reports and discussions um finance I can report that there hasn't been a tri-board meeting um and I do not believe there's been one scheduled yet I keep continue to uh keep my eyes peeled for that uh CES Bruegger.
Those meetings start up again next week on Wednesday it got pushed from this Wednesday to next so next meeting I'll have an update.
Terrific. Thank you. Um policy Ethan.
Are we is this where we're discussing the policies or are we going to talk about that later?
No this will be fine to do that if that's okay with you Humira to get we need the vote on fuel efficiency and the first read on wellness.
So I guess we can start with the wellness um policy the updated policy and I I will probably not do uh Jen uh justice uh by trying to share out uh all of the updates and Christine please come in behind me but um we we looked over the first draft of the updated wellness program the policy um a lot of um it it felt like you guys were kind of coming of age like getting all of the new people on board new policies in place kind of looking at what had been done in the past um and updating it um for where we are now um again Jen did a much better job of explaining it all earlier um if there's anything I if there's anything you want to specifically point out please do or Christine if there's anything you want to specifically point out.
Yeah Jen's still here so I'll leave that up to her if she thinks there's anything we need to highlight.
Uh you all received a copy of it uh I presented earlier at subcommittee and really it's just adjustment of and Ethan's absolutely right it's uh just reconvening the team looking at our current policy strengthening what we had putting some new um names on on it and within it um it was a collaborative effort um again with many different parties um and we will be continuing to work on our wellness policy together as a team we'll be meeting throughout the school year we have um some new new folks and I'd love to see some strength and um kind of we haven't gotten together as as a group in a really long time so I'm looking forward to partnering with Hopkins Academy um to really just make sure that our our wellness policy is strong and that we have everybody at the table to make decisions that are in the best interests of the wellness um both physically and socially emotionally for our students.
And is it is it new that uh you have parent and student representatives on this was that always the case or is that a new development?
We've always had that Ethan um we've always had that although you know with COVID um some of these have kind of fallen by the wayside and our our direction has been um kind of pulled in in different directions um so I'm excited to meet some Hopkins students that are are excited about doing some some great things with us um around our wellness policy we have a new athletic director we have a new food service director um we have a new nurse at Hopkins and so we're excited to bring these people along and and really meet together as a team um but we've always had this it's just the work has has brought us in different directions and so it's just refocusing um and strengthening our wellness policy.
And again is that is that going to be accessible once we come up with the final draft or we vote on the final draft um is that going to be up on the website for parents to view and?
Yes once once it's um once it's approved um and then we will of course put it on the website we will share it out so folks have access to it and again I'm always looking for parent feedback I'm always looking for community engagement around all of our all of our policies and everything that happens um at Hadley Elementary School and I know at Hopkins as well so um I love sharing out information to get that feedback and we will be doing that.
Great. Um thank you policy committee members and Jen Dowd I I did a quick scan of it and it's really comprehensive covers so many different areas and I'm really excited to see it uh uh come up for policy review so thank you so at this time we don't need to vote it is first reading.
Correct however they will now present to you the fuel efficiency policy which does require.
Great.
Yes and this is the the final reading and this uh again we had the the school schools attorney kind of go through and and make most of the changes on this and this is meant to reflect um this policy being a school policy and not a municipal policy of the town so when you see the changes though that's really what the changes reflect again there's been some talk about school buses they are exempt from this policy I believe um and so we don't have to worry about that.
Okay um so let me just clarify that what we're looking at as a whole is a is a document that begins Town of Hadley Fuel Efficient Vehicle Policy and that is the policy you're asking us to pass.
Hmm correct yes.
Okay terrific um any other thoughts or questions about this Paul Tara?
I just just for my clarification I was looking through that fuel efficiency policy and it doesn't say what the fuel efficiency standard is but it refers to a criterion four with the state is that what that is I didn't have the time to look it up normally when you see a fu- fuel efficiency standard you know it's miles per gallon of something.
Um so yes it is um uh the criterion four for updates before ordering so the criterion for they the expectation is that you before ordering any vehicle you have to then refer to in case those are changed right so it's not listed in the policy but you have to make sure that you meet the criterion for updates prior to ordering any replacement vehicles.
And that's a policy set by the state.
Yes.
Yeah thanks.
Okay and uh this is a policy that we are passing um are moving towards uh to to pass it do I hear a motion to approve this policy?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay motion passes. Alright um thank you policy committee um moving on to finance capital sorry capital Paul.
Well our big thing is we have a CPA meeting in thirteen minutes to talk about our proposal for phase two of fields so.
Right. Good luck.
And then we've got the revised number to to present to them.
Excellent.
You're on mute Annie.
Uh so I know you're going to do your best on Wednesday uh but do we want to have a backup for policy excuse me for capital at five thirty or are you feeling pretty good that you?
Yeah that's a good point so I'm on travel I'm in Houston and there's a cap- uh capital planning committee meeting five thirty on um Wednesday I think I can make it um but if if I can't is there anybody who could sit in I think what are we presenting the whole shebang Annie the?
Well actually so that that group is the group that expects a school commit one representative from the school committee at a minimum to be there and review all of the policy requests and then decide as one of the voting members decide which ones to advance so it isn't just ours there are some from DPW there are some from police or some from everybody.
Okay and then so from ours it would be from that spreadsheet it's all of those.
Correct so it's actually this year it's the ceiling tiles and the the only thing we're asking town capital for aside from CPA ceiling tiles and um fire alarms.
Yeah yeah how about this I should know more about my schedule tomorrow so I can text folks and see but.
Our time always around if need be.
That's great.
I can I can be available.
Is this on Zoom or is this in person?
Zoom.
Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah perfect. Thank you.
Yeah thanks thanks Christine.
You're welcome. Okay terrific um moving on negotiations Christine.
So we we had our first meeting we essentially just. So we, we had our first meeting. We essentially just went over the ground rules and um we'll have our next meeting. Annie, I don't have my book in front of me. My, I don't have my datebook.
It's it's uh, it's this month. No, it's next month. I don't have the date in front of me, sorry. So we do have two other meetings scheduled.
Yes, yes. So it was just basically introductions and then we'll go from there.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um okay, we are um on to announcements. Um our select board liaison, Joyce Chloé, is not here.
She did have a prior engagement. And I just want to call the attention to folks, next week, the twentieth is our first day of that single tier where Hopkins Academy will have a delayed start and Hadley Elementary will have an early release. And folks will receive um detailed bus information at the end of this week and our principals will also remind their families, but I just wanted to remind everyone.
Oh, Annie, you're on mute now.
One day next week, twenty. Yes, one day next week, the twentieth.
Terrific. Thank you. Um I also want to announce again that we are having um another uh Community Worlds Fair, this time at the library. There'll be lots of international foods. It's September twenty-third from five to seven. And you can find out more information about it at Hadley Learns in the events section. Um okay, I think that brings us to the end. Let's see, we have to approve the minutes for August twenty-second. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um approval of executive session minutes for August twenty-second. Do I hear?
I don't have those, actually, I don't have those linked in there, so I can bring this back to the next meeting. I don't have those linked here, I don't think. And I, did you receive them? Did you guys receive them with the regular minutes? I'm just afraid you didn't. Let me bring this, yeah, let me bring this back. If that's okay, let me bring these back and I'll make sure they're linked in. So it's fine that that first one A is approved, but I'll bring to, I'll bring this to October.
Great. Thank you, Annie.
Sure.
Approval of the warrants, August twenty twenty-two. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um we have already approved the fuel efficiency policy and the trip to Guatemala. Our next meeting date is October twenty-fourth. Annie, that's at five thirty PM?
Correct.
And will there be a policy subcommittee meeting on that day?
Yes, prior to it at four thirty.
Okay, wonderful. And we are convening into executive.
We don't need to. I'm sorry. I should have told you that. You're good. You guys are all done. You don't need to go into executive session.
Wonderful. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.